That's what I'm using in current buildings, so I would presume that it would be the same in this building going forward.
Thank you. And just one more thing, a resident brought up in the past day about having electric charging spaces for residents of the building.
That's something we can certainly look at. We're going to have a sizable garage underneath for people, so if that's something that's a need, I think it's a terrific idea.
It's certainly easier for you to do when constructing the development than it is for someone to do it in a private building.
Absolutely. No, it's a great consideration. I hadn't thought of the charging station, but certainly would.
Thank you.
John?
Yes, so did I hear right that you would be using air-source heat pumps?
In some current buildings that I am building that are consistent with this building, I'm using them next year. If this starts next year, as I hope, I would presume it would be the same design, yeah.
Thank you, Mark. It's a very good project.
Thank you very much.
Do you need anything?
No comment.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I would move that we adopt the...
Well, is there more comments before we...
Okay. There are people standing behind you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say that.
That's okay.
In terms of your crafting a motion, I saw some general head nods about the notion of requiring as a condition the air-source heat pumps and wiring consistent with charging stations. It seemed like consistent with the intent of the board to have that as formally written in as a condition to your approval, so I just wanted to encourage you strongly to consider that. Thank you.
Well, is...
All right, let's just hear from...all right. Tara?
Sarah Rodriguez, West Acton. Yes, because I believe we are in safe harbor. Is that correct?
Yes, we are.
So, there is no pressure to approve this in terms of 40B. The town has total control over whether this project goes forward at all, and so whether you think this is necessary housing or not, you can determine the number of units, you can decide basically anything. So, I urge you to, at the very least, include a condition that the heat source pumps be used for heating and that the electric vehicle charging stations are in place as a condition of the approval. Thank you.
That's the last thing I'm saying. As long as we're talking about this sort of stuff, I just want to make sure that we layer on, if possible, that if we're going to go with the air-source heat pump technology so that there is no need to bring gas into the building, just so that people know that induction stoves and cooktops, electric, great, they work well, and that, you know, it obvious the need to bring gas in for that stuff as well. Thank you.
What we're being asked to do tonight with this letter is to support the local initiative program.
Correct.
It's referred to as a, in fact, a friendly 40B. We don't impose conditions in these letters of support. Those issues would be dealt with when the comprehensive permit is sought.
Correct.
Before the zoning board of appeals, and those issues would properly be raised at that time, but, you know, but not this evening. You know, the issue about the safe harbor which we're in for two years, from, I think it's July nineteen, nineteen, 2019, to, you know, two years hence, July eighteen, 2021, we do have to keep our eye on the ball with the...assuming the powder mill gets, the powder mill project gets its comprehensive permit next spring, we will hit our 10% goal based on the 2010 census. That resets when the 2020 census is in, which should be in the latter part of 2021, so we don't want a gap there. So, we are looking for, and this is particularly a really good project because it meets a real need of senior downsizers in our community who would like to be able to downsize their house, have money to put in the bank on top of owning a house outright. So, I think those are, you know, really good pieces of this project. The issues that Jim and Tara were talking about would be properly dealt with when the comprehensive permit is heard before the ZBA and not this evening. But where I think we're all in support of, and as is Mark, in air-source heat pumps and installing the electric vehicle stations.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm just noticing in this letter, Mark, that I don't know if you drafted it or the Community Housing Corporation did, there's a sentence in here that says, "We acknowledge that DHCD has been limiting its support of aged restricted properties." That's the first time I've heard that. Can you just tell us a little more background on it? Is it overbuilt or what?
I don't think it's overbuilt. There was a period of time, it's not being used as much, but for a while, a lot of towns and a lot of developers in a lot of towns were supporting projects that were heavily age-restricted focused. So, the state basically said, "Look, we don't want this to be the standard. Family housing is more of a priority. There's more of a need just based on the overall numbers that are out there." So, they're not saying you can't do it, but they are dissuading people from it. So, in conjunction with early conversations with, talking with DHCD about the project, communicating that the town is in safe harbor, has worked diligently to create some family housing with the expansion of the rental at Avalon, as well as the other one, the powder mill project that's sizable and is family-focused, that I asked specifically if they would support an age-restricted project in Acton, given the town's background, and they were supportive of it. But with a concept letter just reinforcing that aspect was what we were seeking to do.
Okay. And obviously, your marketing and the town statistics support the need for this, for this age-restricted housing.
Yes.
He's reserving a spot for me.
And one thing, I think, just adding on to what Seligman Benson said, that going from here, I would be seeking a site approval, then I would be coming back to the zoning board of appeals. At that point, the plans will be further developed so I can put together a specific proposal and outline what the environmental objectives with the project would be. I'm certainly hearing loud and clear from the board as well as the residents of what the preference is, and as I said, it is what I'm using in some other structures. So, it's just, it's a, you know, it's a process that is changing frequently from a building perspective of what's the best approach, what people are using, and how to best address these issues. So, as I get closer to it in dealing with the zoning board of appeals, I'll have some specific feedback and specific proposals for people to evaluate.
Thank you. David?
This is the last time, though, that this project comes before the board, right? Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
And I noticed that your, the project information attached to your letter does have a lot of references to various elements of green design.
Yep.
But does not mention the heating system at all or use of natural gas.
Yeah, with the part of this, it's just kind of early on, we don't put together the detailed building specifications and building designs. It really is, at this point, a conceptual plan with the nature of the building, the nature of the design, the nature of the infrastructure, but that will all be developed while, you know, prior to going to zoning board of appeals. So, they'd get a much more complete package of what those aspects would be.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So, just the draft letter that we have, did you prepare that, Mark?
I believe so, yeah. I don't know. I had submitted one. I've done it in the past just as a basis of things, so I'm not sure if it was modified or not.
So, that was the letter that was in the packet? So, there were just a, if we're going to vote to support, endorse that letter, there were a couple of typos we just have to clean up.
So, can I ask a question just from my own understanding? On what basis does the ZBA evaluate this project? Just on areas that relate to zoning or safety or that kind of thing, or anything that they would like to evaluate the project on? I'm asking that because it seems to me that we should have some statement of, you know, energy efficiency and energy, you know, non-use of carbon-based fuels here. To me, this only makes sense for new structures. I mean, there's no reason not to do that, and if the ZBA, if it's not in front of the ZBA's, or not part of the ZBA's evaluation of the project, this is the place for that to happen.
Well, what's being sought is between the ACHC, the way the process works in Acton is with a friendly 40B, it's done under this local initiative program, and it's both, it's endorsed by both the ACHC and the Select Board, then it goes...
Or the Select Board.
Excuse me. And then it goes downtown for their support, then back to town here for the comprehensive permit application, where we could weigh in on that. Under state law, the ZBA is in charge of granting all 40B comprehensive permits. We have every opportunity at that stage as a board to weigh in with what requirements, what conditions.
But we're not officially asked at that point, is that right?
No, they do.
You can do or I could go to the ZBA meeting.
No, no. They send out letters to all town boards for comments. So, they would grant a comprehensive permit subject to a host of conditions. One of those conditions could be the electric chargers, the two would be the air-source heat pumps, but that's the forum for the conditions on the project. They're just asking us.
No, I understand what they're asking here today. I just don't want it to, and I understand the role of the ACHC, but I just don't want this to fall through the cracks by everybody saying, "Well, it's not my, it's not the thing that I do," right? You know, or, you know, if each board says it's not in their domain, then it doesn't happen, and I just want to make sure that it doesn't fall through the cracks.
It doesn't because comments are asked from all boards.
It will come back to us.
But they just said it doesn't come back to us.
Who said that?
I thought, I thought this is the last...
No, no, no. The, under the 40B statute, for the project to go forward, a comprehensive permit has to be obtained. The granting authority for that under state law is the zoning board of appeals. In conjunction with that process, the ZBA sends out requests to boards and committees to please comment on this comprehensive permit application. At that point, that would be the appropriate time to weigh in, these, the things that we want.
So, having not done this before, you're saying that that's going to appear on a board of selectmen agenda again?
It should, yeah.
Yes.
That's been the practice.
And where we would vote on a recommendation or a response or whatever to the ZBA?
Whatever comments, you know, we want.
Okay.
Ask a question? Tara?
So, it's my understanding that this is your chance, the only chance, to levy conditions, that the ZBA then could ignore your comments. Is that correct? At the time, the ZBA could ignore your comments, but they can't move forward without this letter under safe harbor.
They would need this letter to go to the state.
Right.
It doesn't set conditions, "We're in support of the project." All boards, once they get their approval letter from, I guess it would be the Department of Housing and Community Development, then it goes to the ZBA, the comprehensive permit application. All boards and committees, relevant boards and committees, we, the board of selectmen being one of them, would have a chance to weigh in with what conditions they would want on the, on the project.
Hi, Susan Tobin, Hillside Terrace. This is, I'm new at this, this is interesting to me, but I was also going to bring up about design concepts of universal design, and it also holds true for the energy-saving things. The sooner we work on it and get the public to know about it, the more input we can have. So, if it is a good place here to put in the letter what kinds of expectations we have, I think it would be good to do it. And I've been involved with projects that were expected to be accessible and have universal design, but it really depends on the contractor, and a lot of things get cut out, and then it's not as accessible as walking space and having the land use more usable, as most usable as possible. We all want that, but it doesn't always happen. So, I just wanted to state that that would be good to have that as a precedent from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the October 21, 2019 letter as drafted with several typos corrected as a letter of support from the board of selectmen of the Grandview Acton 40B project. Second?
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, do you say that there is a draft letter from us?
It was, it was, it was, it was in your packet. It would have been page one.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries? Thank you very much. Committee membership term limits. I see somebody in the back there. According to...
I'm sorry, that's, I asked for this to be put on the agenda. I'm the liaison to the volunteer coordinating committee. They asked that this issue be considered by the selectmen. So, what I've given you is, what I have is a copy of the board or committee handbook from the town of Acton, for the town of Acton, that's dated June 30th, 2012. I wasn't on the board at the time, but it was my understanding that this was adopted by the selectmen in 2012, and on page seven, it talks... It talks about appointment. I may have an extra copy if you need another one. It talks about appointment here, John.
I have a copy.
Oh, okay. Appointment, reappointment, resignation, removal, and in the second paragraph, it says, "It is the policy of the board of selectmen, whenever possible, to limit one-year term appointments to five consecutive terms for one-year appointments." Those are kind of unusual. Most of them are three-year appointments, and again, it's the policy of the selectmen, whenever possible, to limit three-year term appointments to two consecutive terms. No other candidate or associate is available for the position. A regular member would otherwise be on the, at the term limit, may request reappointment, and the VCC may submit the request to the board of selectmen at the annual reappointment time. Committee members under no obligation to accept reappointment, blah, blah, blah. So, the question has come up whether the town actually honors that policy. I'm not aware that we have denied anybody reappointment, and many, many members on committees have been on for longer than two terms. Again, it's not cut and dried. It says, "Whenever possible," and I have, Lisa distributed today more information, and I don't know if the VCC folks have been able to see this on the website yet, but it's part of our agenda. So, "Traditions of Acton Board of Selectmen, a document to aid new selectmen in their own office, is dated April 2010." It says, "Draft for review." I don't, doesn't look like it was ever finally adopted. It was on an agenda in 2008 for consideration, but it's still marked, the draft. There's language in here about the board liaison role and committee appointments. On page 28, generally, committee members must be residents of Acton and serve for only a two, three, or five, two, for two, three, or five-year terms. The board has a policy referred to as sunsetting, to replace committee members who have served two full terms unless a shortage of applicants exists. Acton makes use of alternative associate members to have newcomers learn the ropes and extend membership to novice volunteers. Most terms expire June 30th. So, that's also makes, you know, has the understanding that if there are, if there's a shortage of people, the sunsetting doesn't necessarily have to be adhered to. So, you know, we don't get around to reappointing people until next June, but this issue has come up about whether the selectmen should, in fact, try to enforce this policy more strictly.
Okay.
Greg Hutchins, Parker Street, Chair of the VCC. I guess we're really just looking for some guidance from the selectmen in terms of recruiting. If there's a board or committee or commission that has no vacancies, that is fully staffed, we don't actively recruit for those boards, and in fact, it's been my practice periodically, there's not a fixed schedule, but I'll do this three or four times a year. I will get the updated committee master list from the clerk's office, compare that with the list of volunteer openings on the town website, and ask the IT department to either add a particular committee that needs people to that list or to take a committee off that is fully stocked. Perhaps we should not do that. Perhaps we should simply list all committees as having openings and then essentially create a waiting list of possible new appointees to a committee. Try to think of an example of one that's full. Just for the sake of argument, the Council on Aging is full, and what we've been doing is if we get an applicant for the Council on Aging is, I've been just telling them, "Well, I'm sorry, but we don't have any openings on the Council on Aging," and I suppose that's, you know, I'm discouraging people from applying in that sense. Perhaps, and this is the kind of guidance we're looking for, should I not tell them that? Should I bring them in, interview them, send a recommendation to the liaison, and then when June 30th rolls around, and assuming that there are members whose terms are up, if there is, if one of those members has served two terms or more, we have a potential candidate to take that spot, and then it would be up to the board of selectmen whether to appoint this new person to replace an existing person, or if that existing member wants to be reappointed, that too would be your call. I guess, you know, we just need some, we need a direction, we need some steering from the board of selectmen, how you want us to handle this term limits, quote unquote.
Peter?
No, I just got to say, from my own perspective, I am in favor of new blood being added to boards, and I think it brings vitality to boards and helps get a lot more people involved in town committees, which is a good thing. You know, the logistics, again, are a little bit hard to wrestle with. You think you would have the capacity to create rosters of waiting lists for committees if we decided that was the way to go?
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't. You know, if people, people apply for a specific board, and I will routinely pitch somebody who applies for a committee that is full, again, let's just say the Council on Aging. If someone applies for that board and there are no current openings, I will routinely pitch them to consider applying for another board that has an open seat. I don't know that I've, I don't know that I've ever been successful in those attempts, but we try.
Yeah, I mean, I guess now's probably the time to do it. I remember having this conversation now with the VCC a while ago, but that was, that was the issue. Now would be the time to do it so that when June comes around, you'd have a roster of people you could consider either moving onto a board and not reappointing a person who'd been there for two terms or more, or reappointing that person if that was what you decided to do. But I would hate to, I hate to reject people, you know, who might be interested in serving on town boards, and if somebody came to you and was interviewed for the Council on Aging, you could say to them at the interview, "Look, you know, that's full, but by the way, we have all these other vacancies that you might want to consider that might help them make that decision." So, I would recommend that we, you know, approve, first of all, the VCC does a wonderful job. I want to compliment you on your hard work and how responsible you take your duties and what a good job you do, but I would recommend that we authorize them to create these waiting lists and then decide at appointment time how you want to deal with it.
Is that a motion?
Sure, if we need to have it as a motion, yeah.
Discussion?
Yeah, let's, Greg, how many, we have, what, about 50 boards and committees that...
Well, the last time I counted, there were 47, but I think that may have, that may have changed. Well, it might be about the same. You got rid of the sidewalk committee, but you added the town improvement, our town meeting improvement committee, so that's a net wash.
Okay, but, okay, so a little under 50.
Yeah.
How many of them are fully staffed with townspoke?
Gee, well, the Council on Aging, the Board of Health, the Board of Assessors.
Board of Assessors is not fully staffed.
Okay.
That's one of mine. They're over a third assessor.
Boy, there's more than just those two.
That are fully staffed.
That are fully staffed. But most, certainly the vast majority of boards have openings, including my own.
So, I mean, I mean, the point that I have, you know, because I've heard it's hard getting people.
It is.
You know, to serve, so I have never been, in larger life, a proponent of term limits that I think people with institutional service should serve until the voters say, you know, turn them out. You know, this particular policy, as I understood it historically, was promoted by Dory Hunter, who was, you know, a town father in the best sense of the word, but he served 24 years, you know, until I think terror upset him. But I, you know, I look at, you know, people who've served on committees, you know, Ken Kosik with the CBA, who's been there, I think, for about 18 years, and he told me he would do one more term in my asking. Nancy Tavernier with the ACHC, David Hahn with the Historic District Commission, Walter Foster with the CPC. You know, people have really love of the subject matter and have, you know, brought these committees along, nurtured them, and, you know, I would be the last person to tell any of them, "Well, you've served two terms. Would you step aside temporarily and see if we could find a replacement for you? And if we don't, you know, we'll take you back." That's terribly offensive.
That, that...
And if you're not, if you're not, if the committees, if there's only two committees that are fully staffed and you're looking for people to serve, let's not do anything that term limits people and says to them, "Well, stand aside temporarily."
Well, I can, I can go home and check that master list and send you an email and tell you how many of them are fully staffed, but you've, you've hit the proverbial nail on the head. That's, that's the problem. There is a clear advantage to having, to retaining a certain amount of institutional knowledge and historical knowledge and just familiarity with, with the committee portfolio. There is also the advantage of having new eyes and new perspectives on the problems that each board confronts. Trying to balance those two positives is, well, yeah, it's, it's a problem.
Yeah, I, I, if you have so many openings, we shouldn't, you know, turn away people who have, you know, dutifully served if they wish to continue to serve. I think our problem is, is how do we get those committees that need staffing staffed? And, you know, I think we've been struggling with that for...
Certainly since I've been on the VCC and...
Yeah, I mean, I would, if, if our policy is such that, you know, it is the policy of the Board of Selectmen wherever possible to limit, well, limit one-year term appointments to five consecutive terms and three-year term appointments to two consecutive terms, if that is too problematic, you know, we could vacate that provision and go without it, if that's really an issue.
That's the other alternative. I mean, my, I'm not sure we need a motion, but my motion is basically that for a board that does have a full staff, rather than the VCC saying to an applicant, "Don't apply because it's full," create a waiting list, then the liaison can work with the VCC and the particular committee, or it'll be the particular committee, I guess, to decide, "Well, do we want to allow this person to move up, or is it better to reappoint the person who's been on the board for 10 years because of their, you know, whatever experience they bring?" And so that's all. I mean, that'd be the change that you're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the guidance we're looking for. I at least am not advocating anything here that you do one thing or the other. I'm just looking, from my perspective, it's just, we need some direction from the Board of Selectmen. Obviously, the appointments, when it comes down to it, are always going to be up to the Board of Selectmen. And, you know, we're just, we're just an advisory committee to you. We exist to help, to help you and take some of the time burden off your shoulders. But obviously, we don't appoint anybody to anything.
Thank you. Dean?
Yeah, I think what we're discussing here is not really term limits, right? It's not like you serve two-year terms and you're out, right? It's not that. It's, it's turning over, and I think there are a little, some advantages, even for these long-running chairs or whatever that have extensive experience and subject knowledge, that, you know, after a decade or maybe even two in some cases, nobody knows, else in the town knows how to do what they do, right? And after 20 years, no one knows. And so I think it makes sense, I wouldn't call this term limits, but I think having the concept of a waiting list, let's continue with the Council on Aging thing, let's suppose that there's two people in the waiting list, right? Someone's term is up in the Council on Aging, if they want to continue, they would go to the bottom of the waitlist, maybe after two terms they go on to the bottom of the waitlist, and then the first person that the liaison would consider would be the first person at the top of the waiting list and then, and go down. That kind of makes sense to me, the waiting list concept. And I think it's advantageous to the, to the town in, not only the fresh blood, but also just guarding against, again, you know, no one else in town knowing how to do what they do, right? And then they decide one day to move, you know, decide to move to Maine, and we have nobody with the experience. Whereas if you rotate people in and out, now you have multiple people with that experience, and I think it benefits the town.
Dean?
Yeah, just to expand on that a bit, a couple of the committees that I'm a liaison to, it was apparent to me in June that some people kind of pondering whether they wanted to get reappointed, and they've had this sense of obligation.
Yeah.
And some of these decisions were delayed a bit. I think having a, letting some of these people who are on the fence know that, gee, you know, if you don't want to do it, we've got somebody else that's kind of interested, I think that might help refresh the boards a bit and take a little bit of the burden off people that feel obligated to stay because they don't realize somebody else wants the job.
I'm sure that's true. I don't know that that happens on our fully staffed boards. I think that's probably, I think people are more likely to feel that pressure to stay on a board even though they might prefer to leave, because they realize that if they leave, that board is going to have problems functioning, they're going to have problems meeting quorum requirements and so forth. I don't think that circumstance you described happens on our fully stocked boards. Our popular boards, for want of a better term, the ones that, that we do seem to have a lot of interest in. The Council on Aging, again, it is a good example for that. We do get a lot of inquiries about the COA for, I don't know why, but that's not one that I've had to actively recruit for. People self-recruit for that particular committee.
I, just to follow up on that, I think it would be handy for us as liaisons to these committees to know that there's actually a cadre coming up and you can, since we deal with these boards fairly frequently, we might realize that there are some people that have been there multiple terms, and it might be time to move them along, and it would be incumbent upon the liaison to, to make that somewhat awkward phone call.
Well, right, that, you know, that's, as my predecessor, Charlie Aronson, was fond of saying, "That's above our pay grade."
Okay, there are people standing behind you.
Sure.
Frances Westdakden, just to mention that when I was running against Dory Hunter, one of the things that he was saying was that the town couldn't function without him because he has the institutional, the only institutional knowledge, and I'm a professional consultant in my day job to very large companies, and one of the things I hear over and over again is that a well-run company, nobody is indispensable. Relative to the planning board in particular, I feel like that should be elected, and I wish that there would be more movement to make things elected so that the voters can weigh in. And when you say welcome new views, if people are kept off of certain boards because of their views, in particular, the Danny Factor appointment, I think that can be remedied by the voters that can help bring those views to the boards. I would also suggest having more associate members. It doesn't cost anything, and people can be awarded the membership, you know, and be there and weigh in, and I think that that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Deborah?
Thank you. I'm really glad you're talking about this. And I was just thinking when you said that about the awkward phone call, you know, on the one hand, maybe no term limits, on the other hand, maybe some hybrid kind of thing, where if somebody, I think someone said this, if you've been on there for 10 years or, you know, several terms or whatever, that maybe that's the time that if someone is interested, that that person gets to move along. And that argues for actually having some kind of metric, because it makes that phone call a lot less awkward, because it's not just, "Well, we think it's time for you to go, it's, you know, you've done your X number of terms or whatever." The other thing that I always wonder about is, well, before I say that, I think that just to speak to the, I mean, there's obviously, yes, let's have new blood, let's revivify things, let's invite more engagement. I think there actually is a thing that goes on a little bit, which is for boards and committees that have very longstanding members, I think two things happen. I think some people think, "Well, I'm never going to get appointed because that person has been there for bloody ever." And I think also it is, so I think it's discouraging in that way, but I, it's because it sends the message that, you know, it's kind of, you're not needed, and that this, you know, government, I feel like the message we should be sending is, this government belongs to all of us. We, you know, we ask people to step up and service, and we appreciate them for doing it, and you too are a part of this, you know, and it's not just somebody else will take care of it all the time. The other thing I want to point to is that I do think when people serve for extremely long terms, that it has an effect on the culture of the board that, that is sometimes great and sometimes not so great. And that's one of the reasons I think bringing new blood in is so important, because the way it's always been done isn't necessarily the way, the best way forward. So I would just argue for some, some attention to the sort of the functionality of boards and committees. And I don't know how you do that, but I think it is a little bit of an issue in some cases. So I would submit that, and thank you for considering this.
Okay.
One more comment about, that if the person has a lot of specific experience, I'm thinking legal, engineering, and stuff like that, I think that it's worth keeping him around as opposed to somebody who's just been around a longest time, and maybe moving them off of being chair all the time. Thank you.
Shuan Kong, who was a VCC member, just handed me some information that he's looked As of the end of 2018, based on the information from the town clerk, 21 out of 39, or 54% of the committees have one or more members with 10 years or more of service on that Out of 245 members appointed by the Board of Selectmen, 51, or 21%, have more than 10 years of service on that committee. So they're, just to, you know, that's just to try to provide some sort of metric background for the, the scale of this longevity issue, if you want to call it that, that we're, that we're looking at.
Hi.
Hi, Alva Ljajnek, Heather Hill Road. So speaking as a associate member of the current finance committee, one of the things I've learned is that you don't need to be a voting member to contribute, and anyone that wants to get on any of these boards is looking to contribute. So the balancing act of taking someone who is on a board, has been there for a long time, and there's a plethora of knowledge that comes, having, having sat in those seats for a long time, the balance between that and trying to bring more folks in from the community and putting them on a board, I would say, consider having more associate members and having a rotating schedule of voting. So if you have a board of five and you've got one associate, add two more, and if whoever's been there longest, they are more than welcome to stay, they can contribute, but they won't necessarily be a voting member. And take one of the new, new candidates and have them into the voting, voting rotation. I don't think anyone should be too offended to say, "I can still contribute, but I won't be a voting member for this period." And then if all of a sudden there's not enough associates, you've got, you've got backups in there who have been on standby, maybe there were voting members before, maybe they've been there for 10 years, maybe they've been there for four years, but it doesn't need to be a term limits thing, in my opinion, but, you know, you can move people along and have people still contribute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I wanted to follow up on something that Dean said about the, sometimes it does feel like the right thing to do as a, as a selectman liaison is to, you know, if you see a board that's being dysfunctional in a certain way, and you, your judgment is that that has to do with people being there for too long, it's great to have that tool in your toolbox to say, you know, be able to say, "Thank you for your service, and, you know, we won't be reappointing you this time because we have this, you know, we have this policy." But that leads to a bigger question that I just wanted to sort of put in your ears for your future agenda item, which is how, it would be great for the selectmen to have more support, maybe from HR, I'm not sure from where, to help evaluate how their assigned boards and committees are functioning, and what might help them function better if they seem stuck. It can be, it can be hard to detect what's, what's wrong with a committee, but it's pretty easy to feel that something is. You know, some committees are very sloggy and just don't get anything done, some are, you know, filled with acrimony. And to get you guys more help in, in making these boards and committees that, you know, allow you to do your jobs is great. I'm all in favor of finding a way for you to have more support in making judgments about committees. Because sometimes, you know, you can think that it's that, it's the person that's, a particular person that's been there for a long time that's the problem, and, you know, scapegoat. And sometimes the problem is structural, and you get somebody else in there, and it's just the same problem again. So it's, it's good to be able to get some help in evaluating these kind of situations. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a...
One last, one last comment?
I just, I wanted to thank the gentleman from the finance committee for his, his suggestion. The, one sort of fly in that ointment is that not all committees have associate members. I couldn't tell you how many do and how many don't, but many do.
I couldn't tell you how many do and how many don't, but many do not, so there isn't, there isn't that option. The associate member plan really is to prepare people to be, to transition to a full member and it's especially helpful with boards like the finance committee and some others that have very prescribed responsibilities, as many of them do under state law. And there's a lot of learning that has to go in to participating on that committee. Other committees don't have that kind of sensitive portfolio, I guess. I would include my own in that.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Yeah, I think it's been a great discussion, just to kind of sum up, I don't think we need necessarily a change in the policy. It's my understanding that this committee handbook was voted and adopted by the, by the selectmen back in 2012. Janet Adachi was always talking about updating it and going through it, but it just hadn't gotten to that stage. But it's a flexible policy, it recognizes we should consider, you know, two terms to be adequate unless there's a good reason to appoint somebody else. And I'm not sure we need a motion, but unless there's a big objection, authorize the VCC to obviously continue to focus on advertising for committees that have vacancies, but also accept applications from people who might be applying for a committee that's full and letting them know that, okay, we'll put your name on a waiting list and appointments come up in June and then it'll be up to the selectmen to decide what to do. You have concerns about that, John?
No, just, you know, the way the policy reads and it is a policy of Board of Selectmen wherever possible is the, so it's a discretionary.
That's pretty strong, yeah.
It's a discretionary type thing. The, in the materials that we got, there was a May 5, 2008 email from Lauren Rosenzweig-Morton to Paulina Knibbe. There is a policy that after two terms, people must sunset, step off for a year, but it's up to the liaisons to decide. I know, but this has been carried out more as an option than as a have to. And, you know, I'm, you know, as we listen, there's only, you know, two of our 47 committees are fully staffed, so I'm, you know, I'm not interested in, you know, I'm very concerned about, you know, pushing people off of understaffed committees and having them even, you know, more understaffed and particularly people who continue to want to do it. See, isn't there room for new people and for old people to continue on?
Right. Lauren goes on to say, we've left it up to the liaisons to decide if longevity was more important on that board for that particular time or if it's more important to have new people. So that's kind of the way it's been handled, I guess.
I would just leave it alone.
Okay.
Except to allow them, they have, they've been, if somebody calls up and says, I want to see if I can get on the council on aging, they've been saying, well, it's full, we're not going to interview. I would, you don't think they ought to be able to even interview people?
No, I think they should. I mean, there was, I mean, you appointed Jeff Burkett as an associate member for the current year, so there.
Right, yes. Shuan, just, he's more technologically aware than I am and he actually, you know, looked it up in real time. He says more than half of our boards are fully stocked. So I'll, you know, he just whispered in my ear, so I will assume that he is correct in that.
Thank you.
Interview people keep waiting, but I think what's really incumbent upon the five of us is to, you know, take our liaisons seriously and I know with the committees that I have, I, you know, in April, as we're facing the June 30th, I look who's up and go to the committee chair and say, A and B are up, are they interested in serving or should we look for other people? And, you know, they get back to me as to what they want and if they don't want this person anymore. But it's really incumbent upon us to keep in touch with the committee chairs and.
That polling of people whose terms are expiring is historically, at least in my time on the VCC, that has been something that the VCC always does. As we get into spring and after town meeting, we look at the list of whose terms are expiring and then we send in emails to all of those people asking whether they want to be reappointed and we provide a list, well, to the town manager's office, but it goes through the town manager's office to you of who wants to be reappointed and then, you know, then the ball's in your cart.
Kong?
Good evening. Since I've been here for a while, so I might as well speak up as a private citizen, not as a member of VCC. I do encourage Board of Selectmen to consider, emphasize your existing policy because while on one hand, as a volunteer community members, I appreciate Board of Selectmen want us to stay on to continue to serve, but I think it's more important for the town that we have new prospect, new members, new blood so that the town can be well represented as we go through the time because I do see their communities, all members have more than 10 years of tenure, all fully staffed members. And I just don't think that reflects the time, culture and what acting is about if we continually to keep all the old members there all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we need any more?
No, as I understand it, the committee is authorized to interview people for every board, even if there's a full complement on the board and the selectmen will decide in June, if they're, if somebody decides not to, they don't want to be reappointed, there'll be a ready roster of people that can move into that position.
That makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
Good. Now, the chief has been sitting here very patiently, so I'm going to take him out of order. And the board will discuss support for the maintenance and operation of four fire stations.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I think you guys are just voting on that and I'm not sure what I can do to help with that. That's why I'm here, just to assist.
Yeah. Well, my understanding is hopefully we will vote in a new fourth fire station and that will be manned by two firefighters at the present time.
Presently, that's the plan, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. During the course of our outreach on the north, the Pro's North Acton Fire Station, the question has repeatedly come up, will we be closing one station if North Acton comes online? And since the, you know, the main, the big issue in having a North Acton station is to deal with a highly populated area and to reduce, you know, response times. And issues in the past had been, when we talked about a North Acton station, there was always discussion, well, should we close one of the other stations? And that gets a very negative reaction from the citizenry, that, well, you can't close my station. So I prepared a motion, which was in the packet, that would read as follows. With respect to the North Acton Fire Station project, the Board of Selectmen takes the following position. In conjunction with the construction of a new fire station on Harris Street in North Acton, we support the continued operation of the three existing fire stations in West Acton, South Acton and Acton Center, assuring full coverage throughout the town with the operation of four fire stations. And I added, in adopting this position, we acknowledge the longstanding policy of the Board of Selectmen, that a current board cannot bind the actions and decisions of future boards.
Okay? Second. Okay, motion made and seconded.
Well, I have some questions. I mean, I think first of all, it's not just a longstanding policy, we have no legal authority to bind future boards of selectmen, they can make decisions, you know, regardless of what past decisions have been made. I don't know if you saw it, chief, we have a five-page letter delivered to each one of us, came through an email as well, questions, this particular issue points out that, and I know we've had the studies years ago and all of that and we've moved forward. You may hear, I haven't been to, we've had presentations here, so I haven't been to the citizens' presentations to the community about the new station. And has that been part of those presentations? That basically that you're going to, we don't have any plans right now to close, close any of the three existing stations?
That is correct.
That's been made publicly, publicly stated, okay. I mean, I don't know if you've seen this or, you know, I'm sure, I don't, the study is a study, this, she's pointing out a number of other towns that are similar sizes that don't have four stations. The other question is, if we keep three stations open, we're going to have to start hiring more personnel to staff them. So, I mean, I just, we're, you know, I feel a little uncomfortable voting something that would go essentially far into the future until some future selectman might decide to change it with all the other costs that we're going to be asking town meeting to fund at this December town meeting. I mean, those are just kind of concerns I have. I've supported the new station all along, but there seems to be, if this letter represents the, a large segment of the way the community's feeling, we may have problems.
I don't think it does. I'm having lunch with that individual tomorrow to go over, I think the comments that the individual would like addressed are the ones that are in red, which are, why do we have a very high tax rate? Well, because people want a certain level of services. And I think there were a couple of, you know, related, you know, financial issues.
The tax rate depends on the way you calculate it too, because it has a lot to do with the single-family value, a single-family home. So the rates are a percentage of the value of the home. So if you live in Concord, with, you know, a $2 million average single-family home, the tax rate's a lot lower.
What's the effect of, you know, tax rate? And if you feel the tax rate is too high, why did you move here in the first place? This individual's been in town for five years, although his own property here for 12 years.
Do we have any questions for the chief?
Four fire stations.
Works for me.
Chief, if I, in the public presentations that I've done this time around, this question of closing stations has not come up at all. I know in the past it was a big issue. So just to reiterate, are you aware of, in any of the presentations you've done, has this come up as an issue, that people need reassurance?
It's never been asked of me that I recall. We've always been putting forward a fourth station, not just relocating a station. So the message is clear to me that we are looking to open a fourth station.
Well, I think 40 years ago, when we bought this parcel, that was the plan, was to close the center station. So that may be in people's minds, but when you look at that slide that shows the circles of service, that whole area in North Acton doesn't meet the ISO standards.
Well, I get, you know, the presentations we're doing are mostly in North Acton where they want a station, but, you know, when I go outside there and talk to people in other parts of town and pitch the North Acton station, are you closing another station to make that happen? And I said, well, no, we're dealing with, bringing something before the board in support of maintaining four stations. So it does come up, it just doesn't come up in North Acton.
I think you're correct. It did come up in '07 when the last time this was proposed, building a station at 2A in '27, the plan was to close the center station. So quite possibly it's from past proposals, but this one, we are not asking to close a station.
No, I get it numerous times, are you closing another station to make this happen? But it comes from people outside of North Acton.
Sure.
David?
Yeah, I have no problem with this statement, but I wonder whether, my concern, and I've asked questions during other presentations of the new fire station, is that we may need to close one of the other fire stations during a renovation. And I would not want this statement to be read as the fact that we must somehow keep a temporary station or something during renovation. In other words, let's suppose that we decide a few years down the road to renovate the back and center station, we need to close it for nine months or whatever it is, a year. I don't want this statement to say that we cannot do that.
No, that's not what it's.
I know it's not, that's not the intent, but it depends on how people read it three, four, or five years from now. So that's my only concern.
Anything else?
No, I would just kind of piggyback on that. I mean, who knows, changes in technology or whatever. Our stations are in need of serious repairs. We may decide at one point, we tear one of those other three stations down and locate a new station in an area that, you know, might allow us to shut another one down so that we only have three in town instead of four. But, you know, other than, I mean, I would change the last paragraph, either delete it completely or change it to something like, we acknowledge that a current, the current Board of Selectmen cannot bind the actions and decisions of the future boards. I don't know if you could mark up the other part of the motion.
Sure, sure, okay, so we acknowledge.
That the current Board of Selectmen cannot bind the actions and decisions of future boards.
Okay.
So that would leave open the flexibility of your situation as well as, who knows, maybe we'll have aerial delivery of medical services at some point to get there faster.
So, okay, so the last paragraph would be, in adopting this position, we acknowledge that the current Board of Selectmen cannot bind the actions and decision of future boards.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And that was a motion?
Yes.
And seconded?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, chief, for coming tonight.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Okay. Committee membership. Okay, Boston MPO designee for MPO election on November 6, 2019. I'm going to get some glasses. So what do we want to do? This is Austin, right? And I'm the MIPC rep.
Was this the thing that where Bedford holds the current seat and we were?
Yeah, we're the only ones running.
Yes, but Bedford holds it currently? Is this the, am I thinking of the same thing?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
My only question was, who's going to serve on the board? I mean, we can, Acton is the designated seat, but does that mean that the chair, the selectman goes to the meetings or we point somebody else to go? somebody else to go?
This is a request for the board to delegate the voting rights to staff, specifically Austin Saganowicz.
Oh. So Austin would be the person who actually goes to the meetings and sits at the table?
Yes, yeah. So is there a motion to have Austin be the MPO designee?
I'm sorry, I was acknowledging something which Peter said. I don't know how to word this. Is this, I move to approve the MPO designee for Acton. I don't know if it's anything.
Austin as the MPO designee.
Yes, but do we name a specific person in the motion?
Well, actually, the form has Joan Gardner, Chair, Select Board. So, I mean, I suppose Joan can delegate that.
It's in the back page of the last page.
Last page.
This would be signed by the Chair of the Board.
Yeah, but that, I'm reading, the way I'm reading this, this is just to designate somebody to vote. So we're, I mean, we're actually voting here. We can mail in to vote.
Or attend in person, correct?
Right, so Joan is authorized to make the vote, I guess, right? Vote for, Joan is the person we're voting to be on the Minuteman.
And she designates, but I don't think we need to.
Right. I don't see Austin's name anywhere on here. You're just saying the last page we would fill it in.
It's on the back, here.
Well, it's not on the line. I don't have, do I have the form in the documents here?
Yeah, it was that yellow one with the yellow state.
Oh, okay, let's see. MAPC.
If you are appointing someone to vote in your place in person on November 6 at the MAPC Fall Council Meeting. And I'm seeking authorization for Austin to cast the ballot for Acton, and I would sign this.
Oh, I see, it's got Austin typed in on this one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, so my understanding is you have three ways to vote, according to this, on page two, I guess it is. One vote may be cast by each of the chief elected officials of the 97 municipalities in the Boston region for each open seat. There are four open seats. Ballots may be cast by one, in one of the following ways. You can either go to the meeting on November 6 and cast your ballot for Acton, is my understanding, to have the seat on the MPO. You can, we can vote tonight for Acton and mail it in, or Austin can show up on November, Austin in your place can show up on November 6 and say Acton. So I was assuming we'd just mail it in and Acton, we would vote for Acton and mail it in. And then I think you probably have the authority somehow to delegate your responsibility to go to all the meetings to Austin. But I may be wrong about that. But that's the way I would read this.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're right, that the absentee, both the, this thing is given to us, the absentee ballot is filled in and the designating Austin is both filled in, but we can do one of the two of those.
Absentee ballots must be delivered by November 5 via mail to the Boston Region MPO at the MAPC.
The issue is, are you in agreement that Austin can go to this meeting and vote in my place?
But I don't think we would put Austin's name in the motion. Anyway, we just wanted to say that we want to vote for Acton to be on the, on the MPO Board, the Minuteman Advisory Group, inter-local coordination.
Right.
So.
But I, we, I want to appoint someone to vote in my place, November 6.
Instead of just mailing in the absentee ballot? Why wouldn't we mail in the absentee ballot and vote for Acton? I mean, Austin can still go.
The only vote that's going to be held on November 6 is a vote to get Acton a seat at the table.
Right.
See, we can mail in a ballot that says Acton has, we vote for Acton's seat at the table. We're the only one that's running for the seat anyway. And once we get the seat at the table, you can delegate the responsibility for going to the MPO meetings on behalf of Acton to Austin, is, that's my understanding.
All right.
You agree, you think that's correct?
The, you know, I just think it'd be, presumably this has been reviewed by the town manager and to reach this decision, you know? I don't know what the issue is, whether we mail it in or whether we just sign this and say that Austin will have the authority. I'm not sure what the hesitation is on your part, that you want to mail this in rather than have Austin handle it for us.
So, I mean, one of the things we could do is we could just authorize the town, a move to authorize the town manager to vote for Acton for the MPO inter-local coordination group, either by absentee ballot or by having someone attend.
But this says, if you, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, are appointing someone to vote in your place, I can designate Austin and sign.
Yes, but in the previous page, you can just vote by absentee ballot. These are two different alternatives. This page and this page are two different alternatives. And so we could just, we don't need someone to go, we could just vote for Acton.
But I would like to have someone there at the meeting.
Okay, that's fine. This is not an MPO meeting, this is a MAPC Council Meeting to select representatives for the MPO. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
If that's what makes you comfortable, I'm happy with that.
Okay. Eight, Board to Discuss.
Do we vote on that?
Is there a motion?
All right, I'll move that we sign this form to authorize Austin to, Joplinville, is it?
To vote in my place.
Saganowicz, to cast a ballot for Acton at the MAPC Fall Council Meeting on November 6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Number eight, Board to Discuss Authorizing the Town Manager to Secure Loans in Regards to the West Acton Sewer Project. How do we have? David, you're the sewer man.
Thank you. So the sewer project has two phases. The first phase is basically the main, which can service the school, and the second phase is everything else. Each phase has two monetary steps, I guess you'd call them. One is kind of a construction loan to actually build each phase, and the second is the final bonding for that phase. This authorization that we were discussing now would authorize the town manager to begin the paperwork for the construction loan on the first phase. Obviously, this would be, the money would never be spent if it doesn't pass the town meeting vote. But the paperwork takes some time. And the reason why the project is divided into phases and this is, the town manager wants to get, move this along, is that we want to be ready for the school when it needs, at the beginning of the construction.
Okay. May I have a motion that the town manager is hereby authorized on behalf of the applicant to file application and execute agreements for grant and/or loan assistance, as well as furnishing such information, data, and documents pertaining to the applicant for grants and/or loans as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the applicant in connection with this application. That the purpose of said loans, if awarded, shall be to fund constructive activities, and that if said award is made, the applicant agrees to pay those costs which constitute required applicant's share of the project costs.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I just have one question. I think these are 0% loans out of this revolving fund, I'm pretty sure.
The first phase is 0% loan, the second phase, you know, the longer-term bonds are just over 1.5%, but they're, everything can't go under those loans. For example, those, that second phase loan, designed can't fall under those subsidized loans. But I think you're right, that these first phases are 0%.
Okay, so it says, where it says the applicant agrees to pay those costs which constitute our share, that's the design, basically?
That may be what that's for, yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent items. Number 10, meeting minutes, October 7, 2019. Number 11, executive session minutes, October 7, 2019. Number 12, committee appointment, Alyssa Nickel, Associate Member, Community Preservation Committee. 13, Eagle Scout Court of Honor, Dwight W. Fairchild, November 30, 2019. 14, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Tashiana Chahama, Nagar Woods Clubhouse, November 16, 2019. Number 15, accept gift, Recreation Department, for $100 from Freestyle Karate to help offset costs for Monster Bash activities. 16, accept gift, Recreation Department, from Acton Animal Hospital for $500 to support production costs for the 2019 Summer Concert Series and Special Events. 17, accept gift, Recreation Department, from miscellaneous donors, for $17 for funding a dog park in Acton. Is there a motion?
Yes, so a motion to approve consent items 10 through 17 inclusive.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion?
To adjourn.
To adjourn?
Moved, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.